Um setbacks for the fuel pumps in the driveway, um under the Saint Simon's tree. That report, um this is their. Um is shown on the front versus stated as um. So we're gonna try to get that going for you. And these are your possible motions on the site plan. And so have answered your questions and Mr. Hunt, um is he representing the applicants for this as well? Thank you.
Uh, thank you Stephanie. Um, commission, do you have any uh questions for staff?
Yeah, S- Stephanie, um, do- do they meet their open soil requirements?
So, uh, according to our county harvest review, yes, they do.
And they meet their impervious requirements as well, pervious versus impervious?
Yes.
And they're keeping enough trees on tree plan?
Yes.
And they got enough parking?
Yes, they, yeah, they're over their parking requirements.
Thank you. They've met all the minimum requirements required by the county?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions for staff? Okay, um, at this time, uh, Brian up. Make comments and um answer any questions?
Brian Hunt, Robert Still, uh, Civil Engineering Still, um, couple of quick, uh, I know comments that are gonna come, so I'm gonna go ahead and just address those right now. Typically, as uh we do developments, per the zoning ordinance, at any time, the county engineer can request a traffic study. Um, we have this, we've anticipated this, we've got a traffic study that's ready. I wanna just, I want you guys to understand how a traffic study works. A traffic study, um, when we submit for that, we have to be able to show the amount of parking, building locations, ingress egress, size of that ingress ingress, um, business hours, a lot of information that at the site plan phase, we typically don't have a hundred percent of it. A typical site, uh, traffic study is roughly around ten thousand dollars. I will always argue that the time for a traffic study is at the construction plan phase, because at that point, we have a lot of this information nailed down, that we can then have an accurate tra- traffic study. Absent of that, we could get a traffic study today, site plan changed, we have to completely redo it. It's not a good use of the client's money. Um, but we did get a traffic study early on, with uh hopes that the site plan didn't change. Traffic study said what, what I, um, Mr. Mr. Um, um, Crosby had said, which is Frederica Road needs a center turn lane, whether or not this development goes in or not. Whether or not they do anything else down there, if this site remains undeveloped for remainder of now until the end of time, Frederica needs a center turn lane. Um, that is a much more complicated question, just because of the size of the right of way. Um, I think that the, the, this site definitely improves the um traffic, just because of the same r- issues that was, was stated. We have much larger ingress and two egress um lanes on each side that should help free up traffic, as well as, instead of a standard twelve inch lane, we've provided fourteen inch lanes, and as well as, um, just really ten inch radius or ten foot radiuses, we're showing thirty foot radiuses on it. So we should dramatically improve ingress and egress on this site. Um, more than happy on the drainage side, that we, we, we are a hundred percent comfortable that we're gonna be able to meet the drainage requirements. Um, at the site plan phase, it only has to be conceptual, that we have to be able to explain that how we're gonna intend on doing it. We normally do it with the generic note saying that we're gonna be able to do it. We always check our drainage before we get to this point. There was questions from members um of county staff of how we intend on doing that, traffic stu- or the, the drainage study that we've got. We went through some of our brightest engineers, and we're gonna be able to meet those, meet the, the drainage adequately, and we will prove that at the construction plan phase. For us to detail out a complete drainage system at a site plan is again, not good use of the, of the owner's money, and I don't think it's appropriate at the time of a site plan. So I'm also here to answer any other questions that you may have, and I'm willing to, um, to help, hopefully alleviate any concerns any of the public may have.
Brian, I have a question for you.
Yes ma'am.
Um, so if, when you're lo- like looking at the site plan and, you know, balance of the parking lot and everything, the, it, the, the pavement does feel really heavy on that north end side, like there's a lot of it over there. Um, is there a, a reason for that specifically, or um?
Absolutely. We had a design that initially was showing a little bit more of, of, I think there's a couple of trees in there that we were looking to save. Based on comments from county staff, they were concerned that a track, a tractor trailer with a gas carrier would not be able to make that turn. Um, although, they have thirty years' history of a gas truck making it into that existing site, how they do it, I don't know. I can't prove it on a computer that's then able to then turn into something that we can then show on paper. Um, so in doing that, we've had to add pavement, reduce a, or relose a couple of trees, and then be able to just, so that we can prove it on, on a auto turn system.
Thank you.
Mr. Hunt, let me ask you, like, I, I feel the same way, it seems like there's a overkill with the amount of parking, you know? Um, we've talked about this, but if you could reduce those nine parking places somewhat, if I know that's where, where are the, where are the storage tanks gonna be on this site?
They're gonna be in the front.
Okay, so, my question is, why not reduce that parking, 'cause you really don't need it?
Yep.
And you, you know, you could do grass or whatever, and, and reduce the amount of asphalt in that area. And let, explain to me the farmer's market and food truck parking, what will be back there?
So essentially with all of that green space, I think that there was a grander vision of being able to utilize that area for the community, to be able to use for events, or um a concert venue, or a food market, I mean, a, 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 a farmer's market, other things to be able to utilize it, to be able to help the, that not only, um, the north end, but just the community in general, just use it as a, a space. So that, we wanted enough area, so that we'd be able to have, have that. With regards to those parking spaces, I will always, I say always, I usually come in and argue that the Glen County ordinance is a little burdensome on the amount of traffic, and I will typically come and say, based on the current use of this development, I believe that we can reduce that parking by X number of percent. I'm arguing the opposite here today. Based on the current usage, we're saying that the bare minimum on parking, we're gonna need that, we're gonna need the additional parking spaces, just on how that Friendly Express store operates. It is a very popular store, there's a lot of people there. If we did the bare minimum in parking, we'd have the exact same issue that we're facing now. Also, on the other side of the property line, where the current Friendly Express resides, if they do a development over there, whatever that development is, we would then have additional parking that we could then use as shared parking between the two businesses. I think it's smart use of the parking, I do see that there is a sea of asphalt, although, per the ordinance, we are, as this design sets, we are three times as much green space than we have to provide. So we're providing three times more than what we're supposed to, and I think that we've more than adequately met the ordinance, and been able to provide enough parking for the future development, and be able to meet all the tree requirements.
All right, well, I commend you on that part, but uh, could that asphalt strip in the back of the store be pervious instead of asphalt?
Um, if that's a, if that's a recommendation that you guys wanna make, we're more than happy to entertain it. My only concern would be that, um, this being a gas station, that if, if somebody was to start filling up their gas tank, and they go into store, and it starts overrunning, that we would not want that gas to seep into the ground. Um, that, that, and a, a pervious material would then allow that to, to sink in, and impervious material, they'll be able to capture it and then remove it before it ever, um, contaminates the ground. And that would, but again, this is a, you guys, um, you have full rights to be able to make that recommendation, we're more than happy to entertain that. If that's one that y'all want, we're more than happy to look at it.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I'd just like to comment on, um, the issue of reducing the parking spaces. I was glad to hear Brian mention, uh, he's, he's not supportive of that. I was just gonna suggest, could we, uh, recommend what was done at the Prime South Bank project, where they made the parking, um, out of pavers, which is impervious, it looks softer, uh, to the eye? And, um, you know, I, I wouldn't suggest that in the heavily trafficked area, like right in front of the store, but perhaps, all the lateral parking spots, uh, you could consider doing, doing that.
I'm, I'm not opposed to considering that, if, again, if that's a recommendation you guys wanna make, we're more than happy to take a look at that.
Could you review again for me, please? In the back, where you say the farmer's market and food is? Um, my understanding, you say there would be something like a community, they could use it for activities or whatever? Okay, when I see truck parking back there, so I'm trying to figure out, how would that be separated from parking of the, you know, for truck parking?
Certainly, um, M- M- Ms. Rooks, if, if there was an event, let's, and, and the, and the, and the best example I could come up with is if they wanted to have a, um, craft show back there in that green space, that would then have area for these trucks, or food trucks, or other trucks to be able to park. When those events are not going on, if a customer wanted to park back there, that's great. Be a very long walk to the front of the building, however, um, that would be open for them to be able to also park. I think that we're trying to think, we're trying to think ahead and try and plan for a development that's gonna really serve this area, um, but then also utilize all that green space that we'll provide.
Okay, so the truck parking is, but, um, then there's primary or?
Yes ma'am, at the time that there was an event.
M- Mr. Hunt, is part of this northern entrance, uh, to serve the Fifty Oaks development and not the gas station?
No, part of that northern entrance is to help serve the Benny's Red Barn. I think that there is, so we, we cut that off, there is, if, if there was ever a time that the Fifty Oaks and the, um, the Friendly Express were to come to terms with maybe adding a road or extending that, that we have that opportunity to be able to do it. At this point, we're not looking at that. We just wanted to be able to ensure that we're providing, um, a very, a very clear, defined space for Benny's Red Barn to be able to access and come in. I think we're really improving that. Not to say that they're still not gonna pull on the grass and park, I mean, I've been there myself, and I've parked in the grass. So, and I think that we're gonna help improve that entrance as well, and if there was any, um, any other future connection down the road, then I think we leave it open for that as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Brian? Okay, um, thank you, Brian. So, uh, this is a public comment, period. Um, so anyone who would like to speak, uh, please come up to the podium and introduce yourself, and you have five minutes.
Well, I'm still ambivalent, um, and I don't understand, um, well, well, let me say it another way, irrespective of whether Mr. Hunt likes the county ordinances, they are what they are. And, uh, the county staff is charged with compliance, uh, the county ordinance requires that an application be complete at the intake desk. It also requires that the application be in full compliance with all of your ordinances. One of which is, uh, the drainage plan is not, uh, just a concept. I don't know what happens in the design review teams when this, uh, topic was discussed. But, uh, uh, you should be, given the drainage problems in the flooding that, uh, we experienced on Saint Simon's Island, you should be in a position of wanting to satisfy yourselves that those issues have been resolved. And if you don't have the documentation to reach that point of satisfaction, um, then I, I'll say again, I don't understand how you are, are going to make the decision, but you've already approved the CUP, so I suspect I'm wasting my time asking you to com- comply with the county ordinances. And the access to Fifty Oaks is clearly going to be something that's gonna be done. Um, and, uh, so, um, I, I think that, uh, Mr. Torres', his question was apt, and, uh, uh, I think that, uh, you will see that e- eventually with this development, uh, which underscores why you should have a traffic study, uh, that requires that the applicant disclose all of those items, so that, uh, a, a, a traffic engineer can study it and make a, a recommendation. Uh, you do not have a traffic engineer on your county staff, and, and so, um, the only uh, traffic engineer that would have reviewed this application would be Jeff Buckholz. Unfortunately, he's not here, nor do we have his report. Um, so, you're free, I guess, to make the decision to will anyway. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Miles Clark, I'm a resident of Seapalm's West, and I'm a past president of Seapal- Seapalm's West Community Association. One of my concerns, and I can't tell from this, I just ask for a better explanation, is the proximity to this egress to general look, if that's what that's represented right up there, directly across. Uh, that, that, uh, that's the only ingress and egress for our community of three hundred and thirty-nine homes. Uh, it can be a bit problematic, the way the two, two entrances now are positioned, the, the kind of, both, uh, at an angle. Being directly across from that is gonna, you know, present somewhat of a problem. Uh, I just wanna express my concern about how that's gonna work. There was also, when this was presented to, um, the commission several years ago, there was discussion about the Fifty Oaks was gonna have an emergency, uh, ingress egress right on the north side of the existing Friendly's, and I'm kinda curious as to how that plays in, into this design as well. And in defense of the parking plan, if you come around noontime at the Friendly's there, there are multiple yard crews, trailers, trucks parked on the grass all around that side of the building. I think the parking's a good idea on that. That's all, thank you.
Thank you. So Brian, would you like to address the intersection?
Um, Brian Hunt, Robert Civil Engineering. Uh, with regards to the Oglethorpe, we are, um, we're open to suggestions to trying to make that a little better ingress egress for the Oglethorpe. I did have comm- I did have conversation with some other people today with regards to that. Um, are, there is an existing, um, easement, access easement that runs through here. Can I show on the, on the board where this is? So we're utilizing the existing, uh, access easement that runs essentially through here. Um, we are more than happy with shifting it over if that helps. GDOT requires that any driveways be aligned together. Um, if, if that's, you know, if that's an issue, we're more than happy to listen to the concerns. If this is gonna be a problem, more than happy to listen to concerns. Um, we, there is an emergency access per the Glen County zoning ordinance. We have to provide emergency access through this site for the Fifty Oaks site. This currently is shown with this, these two lines that come up through here. This is something that was already planted before we did our, our site plan. Um, I do think it would be better, um, that we can align it better, especially if not knowing what this is gonna do when they sell, or who's gonna buy, or what that's gonna end up turning into, um, that we could probably make it better. That was part of the reason for maybe leaving this open, so that we could have an emergency access. And the Oglethorpe, my, my question is, we're more than, we're more than willing to sit down with, with, um, with the residents and find out what we can do to make that better.
I have a question, Brian.
Yes ma'am.
What's the distance, the existing, um, because just south of that is one of the entrances to the existing Friendly Express? So, what, what approximately, what's the distance?
So we're, we're utilizing that, we're utilizing that entrance. I think that this is the entrance for the existing Fifty Oaks. You can see the pavement that comes to here.
Oh, so that's the current?
Comes, that's correct. We've utilized that existing easement. We've made it just a little bit larger, um, so that we're gonna be able to accommodate the trucks, the tractor trailers, be able to meet auto turn requirements, and to provide, um, safer ingress and egress for that store.
Okay, so I see that. So looking at that site plan, then, it looks as though you're shifting it just slightly towards the north, but it's?
Yeah, that actual, if, um,
It's, it, 'cause that's like directly across.
This easement line comes up through here, and it comes up right through here, is where it comes. That existing easement for the access. So we are, we're essentially maintaining that line, saving those trees that are here as well, and then being able to, um, make it just a little bit wider so that we can fit tractor trailers and those lawn trucks and stuff that come in. Um, I'm quite positive that once this store is, is developed, that there's not gonna be people just pulling on the grass and parking wherever they wanna park. I'm sure that Friendly Express, they're gonna be more than happy to tell those guys they're gonna have to utilize a parking space. And I'm sure the Fifty Oaks development's not gonna let them just pull back into their subdivision and park. I think that hopefully will alleviate it. On top of it, we're providing enough area for people to be able to park there. And it'll be closer for me to get gas from my boat, I'm just saying.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Brian, before you leave?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, my understanding, you said presently, the emergency entrance is there, um, at the bottom, I guess, where you have that, um, what the fifty foot, you know, building setback at the bottom?
Uh, Ms. Rooks?
You thought you understood?
Ms. Rooks, that, 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 the, the, so the emergency access per Glen County doesn't have to be improved. It can be unimproved, it can be, it has to be able to, in the event of an emergency situation where a, uh, say a hurricane comes, a tree falls over the entrance at the Fifty Oaks development, and there's five houses on fire, that a fire truck would be able to then be able to give in access in another direction, or an ambulance, or any other emergency vehicle. What we've done is we're showing that access, is these two lines that come up through here. There's already a fifty foot easement that sits right here, that's an access easement. What we've done is taken it from this property line and continued it here. Part of why it curves is 'cause we wanna save trees in there. A tr- a, a fire truck can definitely make that curve, we've ran the auto turn on it, and it will be wide enough that a, an ambulance as well should be able to get in there and access the Fifty Oaks development.
Okay, so when they make that turn there, and I guess I'm trying to see, okay, they come in, they make that turn, and I guess I'm trying to see, how did they get up and get back to Federal River Road?
Ms. Rooks, can I show you real quick on your paper? Somebody get easy, yep.
Yeah, I'm trying to get down this.
No, you're good, I understand. So this emergency access is right here, and this goes down into the Fifty Oaks site here. It doesn't make this turn or anything. So the Fifty Oaks, as it comes in from this road, then has a road that comes through and winds around to the development. They have, from this point forward, they have to maintain their fifty, fifty foot, or forty foot access around here down to the road.
Oh, okay, we'll see. Oh, that's late on mine.
Well, it is, yep, and we don't have, and we don't have to show the Fifty Oaks development. We just show where it stops at our property line, on theirs, on their, on their site plans and their construction plans. It picks up from here, that that, that road does come through.
Okay, thank you, Brian.
That is.
Thank you, yeah. Um, would anybody else like to, to come up and comment?
Brent Crosby with Lewis and Rollerson again. I would like to elaborate on, um, a couple of things that a gentleman asked a while ago. Um, in reference to the drive alignment, we remodeled this store back in about three, five. And when we did that, we considered opening up that drive, and Mr. Gentile, we, we had discussions with him, and he actually gave us an additional easement to the north for egress purposes, because he asked us to, we, we were all trying to keep those three trees that were right there, okay? It, it's actually proven to be kinda problematic over the years, okay? Um, it's very tight, water issue, all kind of other things. One, one other thing we would like to mention is that our plan here is that, once we open this store, we will, as soon as we open that store, we will be removing the fuel storage tanks at the old facility. And at that time, we have also discussed closing the old drive to the south, okay? No need, the only reason we need two drives is to be able to get that fuel truck in and out. So at that point, we, our intentions are to utilize these, these other two drives. So we will be, um, relinquishing that drive to the south. Um, I, you know, I would like to mention one other thing. Um, this, you know, this facility, if you take a look, we've got, oh, what have we got, four stores on the island? All, every, every one of which has been there for twenty-five years. We've remodeled every one of those stores in the twenty-five years that we've, we've had, twenty-four years. This is the only facility that we have the opportunity to be able to build it, or build by property, and be able to develop, uh, the kind of facility that we actually have on the mainland. We've, two of our, our new designs are, uh, available to be seen, you know, where the old pump can patch and the Welsh produce. That's basically the same facility we're gonna put there, but we're gonna make it look and fit the island character, okay? Um, that's, that's why I did the, the virtual reality tour, because I, that, I felt like that would give people a better perspective of what our vision is, and that we're trying to, to make it fit the, the island. We're not using our darker colors that we use on the island, the bright blues, and we're, we're, we're trying to tone them down. We're using a different type of, of canopy, you know? We're, uh, gonna use the, the hip roof canopy, tone things down, so. Um, you know, with that said, um, I believe I've covered everything I wanted to.
Mentioned that they were all familiar with flash, it's still working, Jekyll?
Well, that was actually where I, I got the, the idea for the hip roof canopy, and the, that was, we felt like they did a very nice job on Jekyll with that design concept. So we wanted to try to use some of those, you know, those design elements, so, thank you.
Thank you. Got one more to comment?
Yeah, David, you've much, Saint Simon's Island, uh, over there at, um, Spanish Oak Cove. Uh, we have about ten homes there, and, uh, like Mr. Rollerson said, we've been neighbors for a long time, and we wanna maintain that, that friendship. So I was just wondering if, um, any light and noise studies were, um, were conducted as far as how that might impact the neighboring communities? Um, any, any limbs that are gonna be removed from the trees that are not gonna be removed? In other words, you're gonna leave the tree, but you're gonna cut limbs to make room for delivery trucks, that kinda thing? Um, mentioned the retention pond, is that gonna be a retention pond alone for the gas station? Is that gonna be shared with the runoff from the Fifty Oaks? I'm assuming that's the case. And then, you mentioned, um, I think you said if you have a spill, but I think it's when we have a spill. At some point, somebody's gonna spill gas. How that water's gonna be treated? Because now we're taking water from two locations, putting it into one, that's gonna, it's gonna have contamination at some point. So I'd like to see about that being addressed. Thank you.
Jane Fraser, um, my comments are simply that it seems that you really should defer this until you have the actual information. Everything's kind of anecdotal. Jeff Buckholz said this, and I guarantee this, this is the way it's gonna happen. But for the site plan vote, you should have something concrete. For example, what is the effect of the light? Are the lights gonna be on all night? Usually at the site plan, those are things you're going to discuss. So the application So the application seems quite incomplete and we see this quite often. So my suggestion, it sounds like a great idea and everybody's certainly done a good job of presenting, but I think it should be deferred until you have in writing what it is you're voting on and not discover later that something's gonna be done with General Oglethorpe. And oh, by the way, we forgot to talk to those neighbors. Oh yeah, the noise, we haven't discussed the noise. So those are important issues. I'm hearing complaints about the, the parties at, at, uh, at Benny's, which is not related to this, but people from blocks away are hearing the noise. So those are all considerations that at the site plan I think are worth discussing and I'm hoping you will ask more questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other comments?
Brandon Crowsby with Lewis and Rollerson. Um, pertaining to the lights. Okay, so we have performed a photo- photometric study. Um, I'll give y'all some examples. I hired, hired a company to do it, but what we did is, um, we are capping the height for the poles on property for our perimeter lighting at twelve foot compared to twenty-five foot that we typically would use, uh, on the mainland or anywhere else. Every bit of the light will be contained to our property. So we're using flat lens lights on the canopy so there will be no spill from underneath the canopy. Um, so we, we, we have taken into consideration that as well. Um, and, and, you know, there again, I think all this is, these particular studies are a little bit premature to where we're at right now from a design perspective, but we did do it because we were trying to prove and make our way through this thing and, uh, you know, and, and do what was, make sure that we could do what we said we could do, so. Oh yeah, I forgot about that. Okay, so those tanks that are on that site, the old site, those, those tanks have been there since, uh, uh, probably the, the early eighties, okay? I, I can't remember exactly what the, what the date is on that, that was prior to our ownership. But what we're doing now, uh, we're putting in double wall tanks, they will be underground. Be double wall tanks, the piping will be double wall. They'll have sumps underneath each dispenser, sumps at the submersible pump. We'll have a tank monitor that tells us, monitors interstitial spaces in the tanks, in the piping, in the sumps. So from a, from an environmental standpoint, as far as the, uh, you know, the, the, the nature of the tank and the fuel system, we will be, we will, we will be or exceed what the state of Georgia EPD requirements are. Um, as for the situation that may occur as far as a, a drive off, that, that would tend to be the most common way that there could be a spill. But our devices, a- and this is pretty much standard through the industry, uh, there are nozzles, there are breakaway devices that if somebody drives off with a nozzle in their car, it, it disengages, it's a double poppet valve, closes both sides of the nose. So, you know, anything can happen and I have seen nozzles that didn't shut off before. But, you know, for the most part, it, it, it will be designed to the, to the, you know, to meet the most stringent of rubber requirements, so. So. Well, he, he's, he's, he's holding me, he's, he's, uh, um, therefore again, another option, fuel trucks drop them, okay? How do you keep from overfilling the tank? Well, there is, the, the state of, the EPA requires that we cut off fuel flow in the tank to within ninety percent, excuse me, at ninety percent of full capacity. That's an overflow prevention valve that keeps it from, so if it, you, you reach a point where the tank's getting full, it, it shuts off flow so therefore you, it will not let you drop any more gas into it. Uh, shear valves, if somebody runs over one of the gas pumps. Double poppet valves underneath it when the pump just gets broke, it breaks loose from the pipe and shuts the valves again, sorta like the shear valves on the hoses and nozzle. So, I, I think I, I got them all that time, but, so, thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other more comments? Okay, um, at this time, uh, we'll close the public comment, uh, portion of the hearing, um, and open it up, um, for discussion with the commission. Or make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve SP four nine five one, that's presented.
A second. Oh, sorry, um, he, all those in favor?
Discussion.
Discussion.
Right, for discussion. You know, we have heard of a lot of, we guaranteed, or we will. And, um, okay, well, once it's approved and everything is approved, all that verbal we guaranteed or we will, you know, doesn't really have to be done at this point because you, you've already approved everything. And with everything being approved, you know, they said, well, we were planning on doing it. Um, but this came up, that came up, and, um, you know, I think the project is, you know, I think it's a good project. I enjoyed the video and it was very appealing. But I think we need concrete, um, statement, something in writing. You know, so often we get verbal, um, promises. And once a project is done, and my understanding, there's no one to go out to review a check of whatever, um, to make sure that, you know, everything is done at that point. And then if it's done, does someone go and see where we were planning on doing it? So, um, I just want to make, mention that I think we need something in writing to, you know, to indicate all the concerns that was presented tonight should be addressed in writing to this, uh, this board.
Well, Commissioner Rooks, one of the issues was drainage and the drainage is usually at the construction drawing phase, which has to be approved by the department before they can ever even start that. So a lot of these issues that were brought up will be, be done, um, at the, the different time, but in mostly in construction. The lighting, there's a, the county has a lighting ordinance that they have to comply with. So that's all part of that phase, which is not part of the, the site plan phase. I mean, just to answer your que- you know, question, so.
Oh, I hear you. They, they all have a long process after, after site plan approval before shovel's going around.
Then I can just add to that, um, correcting the drainage and the traffic improvements, i- improvements of the egress and ingress, um, you know, that would be covered at construction plan. But some of the other things that were discussed, such as the, um, a convivialous favors, you know, in the rear portion of the property, if that's something that the commission would like to add as a condition, that would be something that I would suggest, um, adding now as a condition 'cause that would not be something that would necessarily be required by the county when it comes through construction plan. So if there's anything like that, that you wanna make sure is, um, is covered, then that would be, that as a condition now, if that's the pleasure of the commission.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Got a motion in a second?
We, we, we had a motion, uh, to approve and we had a second. Um, so all of those, uh, in favor, please raise your right hand. Five, all those against? Yes, yes, I am. Five to one, five yeses and one no. At this time, I will hand it, uh, back over to you.
You did a great job.
I think the only thing left to learn tonight is, um, where are we with our ordinance review?
Uh, sure, yeah, the update that we have on that is, um, a couple of weeks ago, um, I forwarded to the Islands Planning Commission, Mayland Planning Commission and the Z N Review Group, um, a, a letter from County Manager Bill Fallon updating you all on the status of the TSW rewrite and the Z N Review Group. And so according to that letter, um, right now, TSW is taking a look at all the comments, um, that were received, feedback received through the ZRG process, um, also taking it, refreshing their look at the diagnostic report that was done very early on in the process. Um, and based on all of those different comments, they are working, gonna be working on a new, a second draft of the rewrite and that's proposed sometime mid-October to have that.
Is, is the second draft gonna be just a rehash of the first draft? In other words, taking the draft that was presented to us the first time and, and reworking that? Or, uh, I know some of the commissioners were discussing the possibility of taking our existing ordinance and trying to work with that. Is there any, any feedback as to what they're gonna do at all?
I don't know the answer to that, to that yet. I think within the next couple of months we'll have any more information on that, but I don't know.
I felt like I read it as though they were taking the new draft.
That's what I, that's how I felt too. But then we had, we had county commissioners tell us that they were gonna edit the current one, but.
Yeah, I, 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 I hope, hopefully along the way, they'll give us a little, a little notice as to what they're doing and what they're trying to achieve. I think part of what happened with the first draft is there was, there was no interim review.
That's right.
In other words, I'd like to see an outline of what they've got in mind rather than just presenting us a, a completed document. So here it is.
Yep.
It seemed to me a little, a, a little too much information, number one, for us to absorb. But then number two, there's a lot of things that we could've told them, don't bother, you know?
Right.
We don't really need that, um, that would've saved them a lot of time and, uh, saved us a lot of effort. Just my comments.
Yes, no more ten-foot driveways.
Anything else?